It is 5:15 on July 16th. I will call the meeting to order. Ashley, will you do roll call, please?
Lindberg.
Here.
Nipper.
Here.
Shaven.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Thank you.
We've all received the agenda. I don't think there's any additions, subtractions, changes. It's our motion to approve the agenda. Motion. Motion by Lindberg, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
And any conflicts, state them now or along the way, pop into your head and forgot. Under the consent agenda, these are all under one motion, one roll call. We have the minutes of the July 2nd, 2024 council meeting, the claims list 1318 and the amount of $138,026.35. If you all received the higher amounts, anybody concerned, questions of any of those? Doesn't look like it. We also have a renewal application for Dollar General Store 25409 for a Class B retail alcohol license. We had the expansion revenue reports for the month of June of 2024 and the share statistical report for June of 2024. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Nipper, second by Lindberg, did that do?
Correct, that'll be, sir.
Yeah, it's fine.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
I mix and match the males and females because I've got these male voices in my left ear. I've got one, maybe next time we'll change it up after the course of the year.
Let's come quickly.
Troy's always so loud. All right, other business, we need to review the map of crosswalks. We painted, per the request of the Harlan Community Schools. We've gotten a little more information from Eugene, reached out to them, clarified a few things.
Yes, for those who were in attendance at the last week's Annalee's meeting, as a follow-up, I was directed to do some follow discussion with the schools and answer a few questions, which have done that. The few minor adjustments we had as far as the where to cross Cyclone and also ensuring at, in front of the emergency facilities, specifically in front of the Shelby County ambulance and fire department, that we don't intentionally direct walkers in front of those facilities. Again, the press catalyst to this is that the school is eliminating two bus routes specific to the daycares. And talking further with them after, is that they actually expect limited impact to walkers, but there'll be some. This is just more on precaution and there were sidewalks in some of these areas years ago, not in all of them. And just to provide a safe route for those who choose to follow that route is what was discussed at the meeting. And again, the only changes were, again, we're directing them across the street and not walking in front of those emergency facilities. And we agreed to monitor and they're considering that they may eliminate the other two routes next year, which may have a more, more impact on the pickup, drop off, drop off up at the school complex, which that's already a bottleneck and creates some issues, but they don't expect much change with that this year. But the other uncertainty is with all the construction going on up to that campus, it's not impacting traffic flow or should it, but it's just another variable. This is the plan and we will get these painted in August.
Okay, any questions, Eugene? Is there a motion then? I guess you're going to motion to approve this.
Yes, we would recommend that.
Motion by Shaven, second by Kelly.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Resolution 2571 is setting the salaries for appointed officers and employees of the City of Harlan for the fiscal year 2425.
It's a resolution done each year that space the amounts per employee that were budgeted and approved with the filing of the budget. And each city, we pass a resolution each year, starting in the fiscal year when those are, we just come into play. So, and at the end of the year, is that right, Ashley, is when we actually publish this newspaper or is that with this one?
We will send this one to the paper and we'll do it at the end of the year, too.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion for Resolution 2571?
I'll motion.
Second. Motion by Kelly, second by Lindberg.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Item C is review order of local housing official and petition for title to an abandoned property at 506 Pine Street.
Work with our city attorney have done, on average, probably one of these every couple of years, which gets to such an egregious status where it's either abandoned or get no response from a property owner and the property just continues to become dilapidated. And this is a property we've been, have been brought to our attention, we've continued monitoring. These are the prescriptive steps. It's an order of abandonment and these follow 657 proceeding for the State of Iowa. And since we formally notice the abandonment, there are 60 days we respond to that. Again, based upon all previous attempts, it's unlikely anything will start to be improved there. And then that sets the wheels in motion for us to eventually, so, I mean, there are a few other lien holders in this case, yet based upon this location and its condition, I guess that's uncertain what those other lien holders may do. Our most recent example of this was the 11 Willow we had done back in 2021, COVID times, which we took title and that ended up being repurposed into a very excellent housing stock. Based upon how this plays out, if we do end up getting title, we would, based upon the bones of the structure, which could be determined once we take title, if it would be better for condemnation or actually taking it down or looking for someone to come in and give us a development proposal. Need your official support in getting these wheels in motion.
I'll make that motion then. Motion by Lindberg, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Next, we need to receive and file park and rec reclamation minutes from July 9th, 2024 meeting. Is there a motion to receive and file it?
For the action item out of there.
I'll motion.
Second.
Motion by Kelly, second by Lindberg.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
And then out of that, we need to review Boy Scouts' request to camp at J.J. Jensen One Fields 2 and 3 on Saturday, August 3rd.
Bob Mahoney was at the Park and Rec Commission, Dress Act Commission, was not able to be here this evening, is not here this evening, yet the direct request from the commission after his proposal was to support this initiative. And it's a non-standard use of our park area, which is why we felt it was important to bring into the full governing body. The, there are, will be adult supervision and their intent is to support some activities and volunteering at the Speedway that evening and then camp within those two areas. They, again, have scout leaders and adults that will be there with them the entire time. We would keep the J.J. restrooms open. It's also an opportunity for them to promote some of the recruiting efforts, so new scouts with an activity such as this. One of the key items was just ensuring no other activity on those playing surfaces in the outfield. But there aren't, there will be vehicles, there'll be tent camping. If they do any roasting marshmallows, that will be in off-the-field areas, those types of things. So, I think it's a good, probably a good activity and opportunity, or scouting is so important. That's our recommendation in front of you.
Okay.
From the park board.
I'll make that motion. Motion by Lindberg, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
And then we have the reviewer permit. Is it Koziski? 53 Lucas Oil Late Model Race at Shelby County Speedway tonight for extending the noise possibilities.
Yes, we were just having a discussion prior to the formal start of the meeting and kudos now to some of our city hall staff, taking some initiative, just following past practice where there's been other events that might run beyond end time for the races, based upon what took place in Eagle last night, Eagle, Nebraska, which is many of the same enthusiasts as well as racers. This should be done by 9:00 and 9:30. Sounds like there's around 70 registrations. We've been talking about this for a few months. I know Todd's office has been very aware, so the promoter as well as Gary Hop. This was announced earlier this year. This is a national type exposure. Not sure what the total attendance might be, but we were a couple thousand this evening. And this was filed just to ensure that things did go longer, which it doesn't appear as though they will, that we were aware of that and we had formal approval for any additional noise.
We've done this, actually annually, we do this with a tiny lung.
With a tiny lung, it's very similar. And there aren't any after-race, like bands or entertainment or, it's just out of, the abundance of caution and again, appreciate Ashley and the team, ensuring the scout on the agenda and contacting them.
Good exposure. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
And it looks like a beat-up night floor.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot less humidity than 24 hours ago. City administrators' report.
Provide a rundown of a number of projects and activities or updates. Where next week, status of our roof inspection should be complete. Again, that was from the damage and hail. Those should be complete next week and we coordinating that, turning it over to insurance based upon the status of that. Yesterday, looking to my left here and looking at you, Joe, we had a onsite review with our engineers at the river access point. And as the mayor just alluded to, it was pretty, it was pretty warm yesterday with a little bit of humidity and not a lot of breeze down there amongst those trees in the east. But many, many checkpoints in the process to ensure December lighting with the DOT because that's one of the funding streams. So there were a handful of us, appreciate HMM and Joe's team, to go out in the field, put our eyes on the area. We also contacted the property owner to the south, which will ease temporary construction easement and that will be checking received. They met us onsite about halfway through and the intent is to get our revised plans so that can be checked plan update for the first part of August. And our engineer was onsite with two of their additional staff. So that is, that is on target. The sewer line project, which was setting up public hearing at the last week you did, those notices have been published and we'll do bid opening on the 29th with, again, the intent out of public hearing, tent full of, of word bid on August 6th. In the, with the televising inspection, inspection that's been going on, going on with CTI or CIT, we did identify in the last week, and I just bring this, I want to mention this as a great example of by having a proactive, at least review plan, which again, we've not done since COVID with our sewer lines, but the intent is to do a section of town every year, is that just last week, we found an additional section that we're going to add, it's down on 8th Street, that we're going to already issue in a dead, more than 300 foot, adding 300 foot to our already nearly 80 blocks of work would be very minor. But based upon the inspection of that one block, just based upon cracks and other areas where the actual clay title is missing, it's like, let's get this line since we're already in that same area. So, on the street side, been some additional painting here, actually today, we're going to hold off on some areas until, so if you've been traveling a few streets, so Fort Dodge Asphalt, who's doing the slurry seal, and again, that is, in the cracks, it helps provide a better writing and driver experience. So, they were able to do the north lane on Cyclone and then just the north lane on Durant from 19th off the highway, yet we have many more blocks to do. They should be finished in the county next week and then they'll fully deploy in town. We're holding off on retaining some light on Cyclone, 19th Durant until that slurry seal is done. So, we're going to be doing some of those areas twice. That area is going on, work is going on. One other status update, we're waiting one final change or approval with the updated community videos with our CGI producers, so I am hopeful that should be released this week. And again, if that's it, if you go to our welcome page, you go to the home and welcome right now, you'll see a short video with the mayor saying, there's more to come here. And these should be released later this week. With that, each of you still will get electrical to the two new welcome signs. Just had another individual member, a community member today that passed along some positive feedback on the new welcome signs, so that seems to be the overwhelming consistent feedback. So, once we get electrical ran, then again, there's just a back LED with some, provides some nighttime lighting and then we'll finish up with the final contract, which will be landscaping and crease garden.
Is it just going to be one color or is it going to be ability to, like, be able to change?
It will be one color, but I'm sure if we had a request, we might be able to do others. Do you want us to low control to control those? The mayor runs the sound system, so maybe you could run some.
Wait, step up, I appreciate it. Give me cell phone.
That's not intended, no.
No, okay, no, I was just curious. I figured probably standard white, but they look good.
And then, one other reminder I have is just stay tuned for more information, or excuse me, more details about the movie in the park night on August 16th, as I spoke about last. There'll be more information to come, we're just about a month out from that, or exactly a month out. And final reminder is we'll have a three-week break since we got three weeks between council meetings, so you get an extra week off there. And the August 6th meeting, I intend to be on via Zoom. And tomorrow night, we wish good luck Cyclones as they're being the substate final tomorrow night. Could be here at Harlan at J.J. It could be the final, at least ballgame at J.J. for the season. Depends on who wins tonight between Bonran, Farrar and Lewis Central, if we're home or not, but good luck to the Cyclones. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything for Gene, questions?
Ooh, as I, this is the meeting in which I want to pass along appreciation on any anniversaries that are celebrated this month. Nine-year anniversary for Josh Travis and the Street Department with 1st of July. Eight-year anniversary for Emily Christ Christiansen in the library, and that was July 13th. One-year anniversary for Madison Strachey at the library. One-year anniversary for Christie Peters at the library, that was July 5th. I should have mentioned the Madison. We had two catch-up ones that just due to record keeping, we had got them on, that was Madison Strachey for one year in May. And then lastly, Dina Jenam Jacobson, five years at the library in May. So, appreciation and happy anniversary to those folks for their service to the city and the public. That's it now.
Okay. Thanks, Gene. From my seat, all I have tonight is a proclamation for the light transit service that we have in Harlan. And I generally don't read the whole thing, I'll just kind of give you the highlights of what these are, but Southwest Iowa Transit Agency, SWADA, we have a nice young man here to represent them, Mr. Henry told me before the meeting, he's been with them 19 years and I'm sure they have lots of folks like him that do what he does. And I do notice, you see, I know there's more than just one of those vehicles in town, but whenever I see one, I always see you driving it. So, I don't think I followed you for 19 years, but I know you have been a big part of our community, so thank you for what you're doing for us. But I know they serve many, many communities, but you look at some of the others, 526,000 rides they provide in one year. And I just looked on their, on their site, I mean, they only list six cities and Harlan being one of those. I mean, it's 40-some thousand a month, you know, that's so many, like, almost 1,400 a day. That's a, that's a lot. And it's, it says on there, it's, you know, 24/7, but it also, 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday, you can call and get a live person to have them, you know, give you a ride and whether it be to school or work or medical or grocery store, you know, that's a good service. And I know the City of Harlan supports that wholeheartedly. And, you know, I would say it just proclaimed in Harlan, the City Council claims this week of July 15th, 2024, it's light transit week and just acknowledge and thank them for what they're doing. It provides a good service for lots and lots of people, young and old, so thank you. That's all I have for my chair. We move on to Shelby County Chamber of Commerce and Industries, Todd Mullen.
Good evening, everyone.
Todd, good evening, Todd.
Well, looking at good news, speaking of lights, the downtown lights are all fixed now. Finally got the final notification from the vendor who is helping us out, so fingers crossed that they'll just keep glowing and nothing will happen, but glad to see those are all back up. Today, we had our chamber all members meeting, so that's our annual meeting, and we invite any chamber member who wants to attend to attend. We give them a review of what we accomplished in fiscal year 24. We talked about some of the things that we're going to be looking to do in fiscal year 25. And then we also introduced our new board for fiscal year 25. Jade Osborne will now be the president of the chamber for the upcoming year. Janet Buman will be our vice president. Jarvis will still continue to be our treasurer. Jeff Sondolnan moves into our past president position and that's, that's an important position because I use those four people as my executive committee if we have cap loans that are applied for or things like that. The additional board members are Steve Einison, Darren Turner, Steve Kankel, and our newest board member is Callie Klein. So she just will be starting her first term with us this year, so very helpful and very supportive board, always has been for us, so I'm glad to have them on board. Reminder for the community that well child visits at Mercy Medical Center aren't taking place now, this is what you need as, like, your athletic exam to be able to participate. They do need to call to make an appointment, they can call 755-4516 locally to make an appointment. Also, you have to visit the Mercy Medical website, there's a form there that you have to complete before you come in for your child's exam. We do have a ribbon cutting on July 26th, it's taking us a little while to get this one arranged, but it will be at Christians Rice Donuts at 10:00 AM on Friday the 26th, so come on by. We'll celebrate them being on the square and we'll have a few donuts. National Out is Tuesday, August 6th, that's going to be from 5:30 to 7:30. That's going to be at Veteran Memorial Auditorium. This is something that we did back in 2019 and then COVID occurred the next year and then we just hadn't really gotten back to it yet, but our emergency responders in town is today, we want to do this again, bring it back. So, from 5:30 to 7:30, we'll have free food, we'll have the Harlem Fire Department there, we'll have Shelby County ambulance, we will have, I'm happy to say we'll have the Life Net helicopter there, too. We'll have the sheriff's office, as I said, and we'll be doing vehicle displays and there'll be a rescue demonstration put on that evening. And so we just invite all the families to come down, they get to see the vehicles that we have, talk to our responders, get to know them. It's an easier way to get to know your responder than when you're out in the driveway and they got lights turning and there's been some type of a problem. Also, for Mercy Medical Center, just a reminder, they're starting their annual blood screening analysis coming up in August, run through from August into September. It's another thing, you have to call for an appointment, they can call 755-4288, get their appointment set and take advantage of that. Last thing is just a reminder, we've always wanted to shop local and this weekend, you'll have a great chance to shop local because from Thursday to Saturday, it'll be crazy days downtown, so go downtown and take advantage of all the specials that they're offering. That's it for the chamber tonight.
Tom, would you mind touching on just a snapshot with the Move More, which I think was a, oh, yeah, make my move, yeah. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Make my move.
So, we ran that program all last year. Through the program, we had two, we were introduced to 208,000 people. They, they visited Shelby County's page to find out information about us. Of those 200,000 people who visited the page, the investment wasn't too bad, I mean, that's basically nine cents an impression, you know, to get out in front of people. We had 3,000 people who liked the page and then we had 108 people who actually applied to move to Shelby County with the benefits that we had listed there. We've been in communication with all 108 of those people throughout the year. I still have 25 people I'm working with and I'm just doing what I can, you know, to entice them to move or find out what it may take, you know, to get them to make that move. We have some wonderful benefits out there, I mean, Shelby County State Bank has offered to help with down payment on a, on a home that if they purchase a home, you know, we have some wellness facility and other amenities out there that we've offered and, and many of them want to get involved in the community when they hit here, so we'll introduce them to our club groups that they can participate with and become a part of. So, I wish I could stand, as I told my membership today, I wish I could stand here and say, yeah, and five members, you know, people moved into town. That hasn't happened.
Each with four children.
But, yeah, each with four children. But we are still in communication with multiple people and hopefully we get a couple of them to come across the line, so. But I was, I was happy with the impression count. I, you know, I thought nine cents an impression, we're reaching over a couple hundred thousand people. If nothing else, maybe they have to move here now, but maybe they come visit or maybe they come attend an event. And that, that also is another step that a lot of people will take before they actually make a commitment, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Todd.
Thank you.
Townness Utilities Update, Joe Rouschenberg.
Hello, everyone.
Joe.
Good evening. I've got four items. Two of the four are just updates on our, for our projects. Raw Water Project update, East Well Field, we've got wells 19, existing wells 19, 4 and 5 left to tie into the system. They are working on pulling in the primary electric for the East Well Field and so we'll be working amongst the hosting electric and HOA to get those tied in to the system. The block length subcontractor for McCarthy is working on the building, the last, the third wellhouse in the South Well Field. And then we're looking at, hopefully they'll have that block worked done towards the end of the week and then we're looking at putting the two roofs on the last two, the last two of the buildings down there in South Well Field Monday. And then we continue getting electric controls done on those. Fourth new well, well 35, we talked about, is going to be our deep well in the East Well Field. Right now, that's scheduled to be drilled end of August, first of September is what they're kind of telling us. I mean, that could creep some more, I guess, just depending on what they get done, where they're working presently. But hopefully we should have that up and running in the November, December timeframe. But hopefully, we should have that up and running in the November, December timeframe. And going then to our overhead underground conversion electric project, Boring subcontractor is currently working in the industrial slash utility avenue area. Then Burns, or the main contractor then, or the general contractor then, is kind of following them up, they're doing tie-ins, so they're doing tie-ins in trailer court and Indy College in Lincoln area. Next item, I'd mentioned this before, HMU is continuing to have employees go door-to-door, so just as a reminder, we're looking at still trying to do that here on the Saturdays in July, so hopefully get the majority of those taken care of as far as our lead service line surveys. And there again, employees will be wearing HMU shirts, hats, and will likely be in HMU vehicles, just so people know. Last item, kind of more of an update, HMU, I think we talked about this a little bit, we're looking at closing in a ditch along our lagoons there on Utility Avenue, just so we can maintain that ditch, so we're extending some storm sewer, city storm sewer, to the south along Utility Avenue. HMU employees be working with McCarthy Trenching, one of McCarthy Trenching's operators, that will be running their backhoe, and we'll be providing some of the labor for that, just to keep costs down. We'll be installing a 48-inch HDPE or black corrugated pipe in the ditch, and then we're also talking with Jeff Musich there, we're going to utilize one of the street department employees to kind of help us out there, too, using the city loader, just to help kind of moving the pipe around, and then hauling the bedding rock to the area as they, you know, as that's put in the ground. HMU is covering the cost of the pipe, bedding rock, and the hour they feed for the backhoe and operator, so. Just should be a big improvement, so we can kind of maintain that area down there. Last item I had, I guess, any questions or comments for me?
Your office hours working good?
They are.
Change?
Yeah, they are, I think, I haven't heard any complaints, seems like everybody's adjusting, you know, this, we're into our second week, so.
Good deal.
Seems to be going good.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, thank you.
Shelby County Sheriff's update, Captain Butler, is that correct? Is that your title, or?
Yeah, titles for books. So, for the month of June, we had nine accidents, 16 citations, 109 warnings from traffic stops, eight arrests, one criminal mischief report, fourth theft report, 396 contacts, seven, five welfare checks, seven residential or business alarms, and seven animal complaints.
Because you're back, you're full staff, right?
We are, yeah, we are full staff. The newest hire, though, will go to the academy at the end of August, so, plus that 14 weeks, 16 weeks at the academy. So, from the end of August through mid-December, he's in field training now, so he's helped the guys that are working shifts, so, get the experience that way before he goes to the academy.
With the race to CD, for example, was there any additional request or communication with law enforcement?
Yeah, so Gary came in, they didn't want to have extra deputies there, like, the fair board paid for a couple guys to be there on duty and work, they didn't want that, but we are going to have the on-duty guys do several walkthroughs and then any escorts that they might want, so he had some concern about bank deposits and stuff like that.
Good. Have we shot specifically on that? Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any comments from the public? Any comments from up here? Comments from Sharon, still up in the chair?
I did, Jay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, being adjourned.